Meeting of the Natural Resource Committee, I'll call it to order and we will stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Has public notice of this meeting been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with South Carolina Freedom of Information Act? Yes, we confirm that. I'd like a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move ahead, Chairman.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Glover. Is there a second? Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Councilman Passamit. With no objection, the agenda is approved. At this time, I hope everyone has had time to review the minutes of September 7th. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So move ahead, Chairman.
Okay, Councilman Glover made a motion. I need a second to approve the minutes of September 7th, 2021.
I'll move. Take a second.
Okay, that was done by Councilman Passamit, Chairman Councilman Passamit. With no objection, the minutes from September 7th are approved. At this time, we will entertain citizens' comments. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to make citizens' comments? Or online? Yes, ma'am, if you'll state your name, come forward for the record.
My name is Mary Moyden. I'm here. I don't know if I would get the opportunity to speak here at number nine. I'm here in the event that you have any questions about number nine on the agenda.
Okay, you can-
And I didn't want to get ahead. I just, I didn't know if you had-
Well, if you'd like to make some comments now, that would be fine, about number nine.
Okay. Number nine, that's the property that my, our parents, Justin Lavenya-Moyd of Ladies Island, left for us. And my siblings, we all have home. And my parents were entertainers and they took care of the community, they helped in the community. And we thought it would only be fitting because they always had people in and out of their home. You know, we want to do something in memory of our parents. So we wanted to do a short-term Airbnb. We did not, a short-term rental. We did not want to have someone just living in there. We want to be, have some input because we want to use the home in between. But it's not feasible to do that with someone in there all the time. I live right behind the property so I will be able to oversee and see how things work with that. But that's why I'm here. We want to do something with our parents' property. It's been sitting for a while. And because of all the problems that we have encountered, you know, we now know what to do and we are doing it. And so I'm here in the event that you may have questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone online with public comments at this time? Yes, there, there-
Yes, ma'am, she's just unneeded.
Okay. If you'll state your name for the record.
Yes. Good afternoon, this is Mary Ryan Krieger. Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mary Ryan Krieger and I'm the Deputy Director for Government and External Relations at Marine Corps Air Station Beaufort. Thank you again for your time and the opportunity to speak regarding Agenda Item 10, the proposed zoning map amendment and rezoning request for 2706 Trask Parkway. This property is located in the accident potential zone two, which is also noise zone three, where noise levels can reach up to 80 to 85 decibels. The Department of Defense Air Installations Compatible Use Zone Study, or the ACUS study, identifies these zones as where an aircraft accident is most likely to occur in the vicinity of the airfield. And due to this property being located in the accident potential zone two, Marine Corps Air Station, Beaufort will continue to propose, to oppose this rezoning request due to its strong incompatibility with the ACUS and especially on the basis of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
I would, when you did the two section map, you still do public comments at that time or no?
Well, what, normally what we do is we have a public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So we prefer you go ahead and make your public comment now.
Okay.
Okay. Just say your thing.
Yeah, for record, my name is William Smith.
Yes, sir.
I am definitely here in support of number nine. And, and not only along, am I in support of it, but adjacent properties to that, they are already commercial, commercial properties. So I don't believe what they're asking for is not, was what is currently existing adjacent to that. So I think, and, and the question also comes about, how many people are doing AmbienBs already that have not registered? So I, so I really, my hat goes off them for being respectable to the county and actually get going about it the correct way. So I think, I believe that this is something that a lot of people are doing. And the county taxes are, are going up and the county's asking people for money. So I don't think that the county should actually deny anyone the opportunity to be able to pay their taxes or to pay bills. And if that, that's what the family's asking for, then I think that the county council ought to go ahead and move forward and grant, grant them that. Because they're trying to do it the correct way and they're trying to be respectable in doing that. And so I think, I, I'm here in support of that. And I believe that we ought to give them the full autonomy to do with their property what they rightfully deserve to do with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments, Ms. Brock?
Yes, ma'am.
None? Okay, well, moving on to number seven, is an ordinance to amend the Storm Order Management Utility Ordinance as adopted September 26, 2016, to provide for the adoption of storm order management standards set forth in the Southern Low Country Design Manual, better known as Soloco Manual, to meet the municipal's separate storm order system, MS4, permit requirements. And online, I think we have Mr. Fralix and Mr. Desai, is that correct? Are they the ones going to speak to this?
Yeah, this is Jared. Neil, are you there? I can speak to it.
Okay.
So these are a few changes. As you're aware, that we've made some updates. Our, the Soloco manual, design manual was passed, storm order manual was passed last year and adopted by the other municipalities. These are some small and minor updates, just from implementation and practice, that we thought was best just to codify that back in the manual. And in doing so, obviously, it was passed via ordinance and codified with Community Development Code. That, so that's what these are in reference to.
Okay, very well. We have any questions from council members? I have just one comment. I, the Storm Order Board has reviewed this, correct? I think they did a couple of meetings ago, or-
They, they have, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we have another council member who has joined us, Councilman Dawson. Does anyone on, online have any comments? I would like to entertain a motion, if there's no more comments, to approve the adoption of the proposed Soloco Design Manual update.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I heard Councilman Passamit make the motion. Councilman Dawson, do I hear a second from you?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, without objection, this motion will pass to adopt the proposed Southern Low Country Design Manual updates. And next, it will go to County Council for first reading. All right, item number eight is an ordinance for a tax amendment to the Storm Order Management Utility Ordinance as adopted September 26, 2016, to address the adoption of the Southern Low Country Design Manual. And you're going to take-
This is in the same manner. So again, just some overall minor updates. And then because of the updating the manual, have to get it in a ordinance setting.
Will the municipalities be adopting these, too? Is that the plan?
Yes, so we'll coordinate with them. I don't know if they'll update it every time we make an update, but we'll definitely coordinate with them as such.
Are there any questions from county council members present? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tax amendment to Chapter 99 of the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Councilman Passamit, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Glover made the second. All right, without exception, that will be approved and we'll move on to the full county council at the next meeting. All right, number nine is the one we had a couple of public comments about. This is an ordinance for a tax amendment to the Community Development Code, CDC, Section 8.3.40, permitted activities to revive the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District to include short-term rentals as a special use. Okay.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman and committee members. So this is an application to add short-term rentals to the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District. This is a community preservation district and short-term rentals are currently not allowed. In September of last year, short-term rentals were adopted into the Community Development Code for all of our transect zones except for T1 natural preserve and our conventional zones as a special use. And in, it was not included in industrial or in our community preservation districts. And so that's the reason this is before you all today. Short-term rentals are not currently in our community preservation districts. The Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District is a district that is intended to allow small-scale retail and business, small civic uses, community engagement, and residential. So it's, it's a mixed-use district. The corridor that it contains is the Sam's Point Road corridor from Morris Drive all the way up to the roundabout. So it flanks either side of that. Largely commercial conditions currently on that portion of the corridor. There are a couple of planned unit developments, so a couple of neighborhoods included in that portion, but otherwise relatively commercial. The applicant is the owner of 160 Sam's Point Road, which, as you heard, is currently a residential use. And so it would be applicable, it would align with short-term rentals as, as its current use. So with the, the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District is very similar to the transect zones that currently allow our short-term rental uses. And so in assessing this, we looked at the current uses along the corridor that, that make up the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District, the intent of the district, what other transect zones allow it, and how they compare, the use on the property, and essentially determined that this is an appropriate addition to the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District. It would be a special use if approved, so it would have to go before the zoning board of appeals after staff goes through that process at SRT. And, and that is where it sits.
Let's open it up for any questions.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to have to recuse myself. I own rental property on that corridor.
Okay, yes, sir.
And I, and I would like to include that the, because it's a community preservation district, we did take this to the Ladies Island Community Preservation Committee and they reviewed it during their September meeting and were not opposed to the addition of short-term rental to this district. It also went to the Planning Commission during their October meeting where it was unanimously recommended for approval.
Okay. Are there any questions, anyone online? So just, just to clarify, this will allow for this particular piece of property to go to the zoning board of appeals to allow short-term rental, correct?
Yes, and it would allow it in the entire district.
In the entire district.
So if anyone living has property in that district, they could apply for a short-term rental application.
Okay, very good.
And that just figures out line in the map that you have.
Yes, and it's, I don't, if you have the image, we can pull it up. It's included in the agenda packet.
Sort of go from Harley Hall Road to Short Landing, I guess?
Yeah, the, I believe Miller Drive all the way up to that roundabout area on Sam's Point.
Yeah, that's Harley Hall.
And it flanks either side, yes, sir.
Okay, I think Councilman Dawson, did you have a question?
Yes, I, I was going to make a motion, Madam Chairman, if you're ready to entertain.
I think we are, yes, sir.
I, I move that we approve the proposed amendment to the Beaufort County Development Code, Section A, A340, to revise the Lady, Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District to include short-term rentals.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Second by Councilman Glover. All right, any discussion? All right, without exception, this will be forwarded, forwarded on to full council as a tax amendment at the next meeting. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. All right, number 10, and you'll be presenting that one, too. Thank you. That is an ordinance for a zoning map amendment slash rezoning request for two acres at 2706 Trask Parkway from T2 Rural Neighborhood to C4 Community Center Mixed Use.
Yes, yes. So this is, as you've just mentioned, two acres at 2706 Trask Parkway. I do have a PowerPoint presentation just to show you some images of the property, what it currently looks like. But a little bit of background, this property has been, for many decades prior to 2018, a gas station. It was previously known as the Dobbs Store. So some of you may be familiar with it. It's been an existing building and business for quite some time. In 2018, it closed and the applicant, who is the new owner of the property, acquired it in April of 2019 and got a grandfathered zoning permit for the non-conforming use for the gas station. The condition on the permit was that it had to be reestablished within a year. In the meantime, the convenience store, that's a part of this property, and the liquor store were reestablished. They are currently up and running, but the gas station was not successfully reestablished in time and the permit expired. The applicant is interested in pursuing the C4 Community Center Mixed Use rezoning in order to reestablish the gas station, which is a conditional use underneath that rezoning. And the reasons behind why he was unable to get it done that were given to us is that there were issues with getting parts and issues with the pandemic. So that's what he reported as the, the problem with getting that gas station back up and running. Now, it's an interesting property because 25% of the two acres, or half an acre, is in the ACUS. And as you heard Ms. Krieger speak to earlier, the Community Center Mixed Use, the C4 designation, they are opposed to that rezoning. It is the APZ2, which has measurable risk for accidents to happen. And the gas station is actually in the portion of the property that's underneath the ACUS APZ zoning. It's also the loudest noise contour, as was mentioned during public comments. It does align with future land uses in our 2010 and our draft 2040 comprehensive plan, but it would be a spot zoning if it changed. And again, the air station is opposed to that. It, the community commercial uses are incompatible with the ACUS zoning.
I'm hoping you won't be switched.
Oh, sure. So, and I will let you know in just a moment. So it did go, we did have the air station review it. They submitted a letter expressing that they do oppose the rezoning. And it went before the Beaufort County Planning Commission during their October meeting where it was, a motion was made to approve the proposed zoning amendment. It passed three to two. Then it went to the Metropolitan Planning Commission where a motion was made to approve the zoning amendment. It failed two to three. So that's where that currently stands. And we did send our team out to get drone footage of it, since that is a helpful addition to have in these considerations. But because it is so close to the air station, it is a no-fly zone. So I've got aerial imagery and photos from Google Maps, which we will start to go through. We'll go ahead and go through the slides here. So this just gives you context of the area. The arrow is pointing at that yellow parcel, so showing that it would be a spot zoning, completely surrounded by the T2 Rural Neighborhood properties. You can also see its proximity to the air station. And then we'll scoot to the next. Here is an aerial image, a little bit closer, so you can see how the current building on-site addresses Trask Parkway and the, the overall layout and size of the plat. So it's right there in the front, where is that APZ zoning is. Scoot to the next. And then these are just images from Google Earth to show you what it looks like coming down Trask Parkway. So this is on your way into Beaufort. You can see the gas station on the right side of the street. And then we'll go to our last slide, which shows you the face of the building. This is as good as it gets without our drone footage.
That, that's very helpful, though. It's good, good pictures.
Okay. So if you have any questions, I'm-
All right, let's, we'll open it up for questions. Anyone have any questions? I had one question, nobody else asked it, but I'll wait and see.
And staff does-
I think Councilman Passamit has a question.
Yes, where's the nearest gas station that is being used?
There is a gas station. So if we can go back to the PowerPoint presentation, I can actually point it out for you. But there is a gas station to the south, as you're moving down Trask Parkway, at the Clarendon-Bruce K. Smalls Trask Parkway intersection. There's a gas station right there that's in operation, just across from the trailhead of the Spanish Marsh Trail. Okay.
And if I'm not-
Approximate distance?
I, it wouldn't, a tenth of a mile.
A thousand feet.
There we go.
And that one was, is grandfathered because it was in existence before the-
Yes.
ACUS and the APZs were adopted.
Let me ask a question. You, you, Mr. Passamit, you finished?
Yeah, no, you, you've answered my question.
There's a gas station, I know, used to be a gas station across the road from the Shell station that you said is there. Would they be permitted to, to do anything with a gas station there if they, if the owner purchased it and came back to do something? Because that's, that's in the same neck of the wood.
Yes, so that, that intersection is zoned, C4 Community Center Mixed Use, which is what the applicant is going after right now. So it is a conditional use under the current zoning, but it would still likely need review by the air station, just because I imagine it's also in the ACUS and the APZ zones. So it, it kind of depends on what it is they're proposing. There would be some conditions under the ACUS and then some conditional conditions with regard to the zoning itself. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
It does. I mean, because it's, to me, that whole area looked like a commercial zone, but you explain that that particular corner is zone commercial. And then where this current station used to be, it was actually a T2 zone.
Rural neighborhood, mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the convenience store and the liquor store can remain open as being grandfathered, correct?
Yes, they have their grandfathered permits, yes.
And then 20, I wrote down, 2019, it was, it was closed in 2018, and then the new owners came in in 2019.
Mm-hmm, and the-
And they had a year to get, to get the gas station part back open.
Yes, ma'am, yes. So the permit, the grandfathered permit was issued in May of 2019. So they had a year to get the gas station back up and running. So that permit expired in May 2020 and it was not operational at that time.
But they opened the liquor store and the convenience side of it within that year?
Yes, and they were, there were separate permits for each of those three different independent businesses.
All right.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Dawson?
Yeah, this, this property and businesses in my district.
Yes, sir.
This convenience store, liquor store, gas station, by the prior owners, have been in operation for decades. This is in the middle of a gray silk community, which accompanies the Shell station, which is just up the street, maybe two, two and a half football field there. Mr. Glover referenced an old gas station that is currently being renovated and, and may come back online as well. I, I know that this business owner lost the opportunity to get the business license for the, for the gas station. But, but, but I will tell you, this, this is a commercial hub that has been viable in that community, in the Graysville community, as I said, for decades now. And to, to, for this gentleman to try and resurrect this business, I, I think it's an asset and something that the community welcomes. The, the fact that his permit for the gas station has expired, I, I believe we should take the opportunity to afford this gentleman the opportunity to bring the gas station back online. Having said that, I, I will tell you, I know the air station is opposed to this, but by the same token, I, I, I feel adamantly, I want to be careful how I say this. I, I feel, I feel as if sometime we, we take the regards of the air station somewhat too far, in my opinion. Just several weeks ago, we, in coordination and partnership with the air station, we paid $6 million to a family out in the Dale community not to develop their property or to limit development on their property. Here, here, this situation is we have a, a young man, and I, I wouldn't say he's poor, I don't, I don't know his financial status. But here we have a small business owner who's trying to get a business up and going. And, and the staff has recommended not to approve it. The Planning Commission approved it. And so I, I am, I am supportive of actually allowing this gentleman the opportunity to open the gas station. So with that in mind, I would make the motion that we move forward and allow the, the, grant the property owner the permission to apply for, to permit needed to, to open the gas station.
Okay, take that in the form of, that is a motion. Do I have a second to the motion?
I have a question, Madam Chairman.
Oh, we need a second and then we'll discuss. Okay, do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilman Glover made the second. Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. I think that was Councilman Hershon, is that correct?
Yes, thank you. Just so I'm clear, did this property revert back to rural when the business license lapsed? Is that how we got into this situation?
This property was zoned, T2 Rural Neighborhood, when we adopted the, the CDC. And in fact, it's been non-conforming since the adoption of the ZDSO in 1999. So it's been a non-conforming use for quite some time. So there was no conversion necessarily of the, the zoning that is on the property. It's just that the, the grandfathered use expired when the permit expired.
Got it. So, okay, I got it. So it's been an existing operating business as it exists today. This is similar to another property that we talked about maybe a month or two ago, if I'm not mistaken? Or was- if I'm not mistaken, where it was operating as it was and was non-conforming, and we basically changed the zoning so that it was non-conforming, if I'm remembering correctly anyway. But I digress. That was helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Questions?
Just a comment. I know this property very well. I knew the family that owned it, gosh, 60 years ago, 50 years ago. One of the girls in my class's parents owned it. But the whole idea of grandfathering is obviously to protect somebody who's already there, and I don't think anybody would debate that. But here we're talking about somebody who let it expire, let a grandfathering expire, and now wants to go back in. Essentially, this is a startup. I don't know, I know the history of the property, but I'm reluctant to vote for anybody, to put a C4 in the ACUs from scratch. And so I'm going to have to vote against it, because I think we're just opening up Pandora's box. If we're going to give this gentleman a C4, what about the next gentleman or lady or person comes in and says, hey, we want to put something in the C? I want to be consistent, and so I'm going to have to vote, I'm going to have to vote no on this.
Okay. Any other comments?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm with Mr. Somerville as well. However, can this owner be, continue to be grandfathered in or give an opportunity to grandfather his property in with the, that he failed to meet? And we just extend that to allow him without changing the zoning on it, or we have to change the zoning in order for him to do what he wants to do?
That's a good question. Yes, sir.
I think that the deadline was there, but I hear what Mr. Dawson is saying, and yeah.
That is something, if you all don't mind, I would like to take some time to investigate. Couple of things are at play here that you all need to be aware of, and I've stood up and talked to you all about before with regards to zoning properties and grandfathering and all of that. You recall recently, within the last six months, you all have rezoned grandfathered properties because they were just that grandfathered, and y'all were like, hey, you know, this is just a business, they weren't aware of their zoning, they didn't know it was on their tax bill, we're going to rezon their properties in opposition to Stausch recommendation and the Planning Commission. So that's one issue. The second issue, and this is what I need to investigate legally, is that in zoning construction, typically whenever you're dealing with a grandfathered situation, if a building is so situated to approve one commercial use, then that use may continue throughout that building. So if the pumps are still there, the canopy's still there, everything is still there, then there might be a possibility, to your point, that we could grandfather the property. And I'm going to take one other liberty, and I probably should not do this, so if I misstate this or overstep my bounds, please forgive me. But I too, with Councilmember Dawson, share Hicks's concerns about the consistency of the air station with the enforcement of the ACUs. They're taking a position on this to say, hey, we can't allow these folks to have gas pumps. But right down the road, after they denied a few years ago a Dollar General that some of you all got calls on, they have now allowed, are in the process of allowing someone to put a mobile home dealership on the property that's going to generate far more people on that property walking around outside looking at mobile homes than they would before. In addition to that, on the other property that Mr. Dawson just referred to that we're paying, you know, they're concerned about the airspace, but yet we're approving, or we did approve, a conservation easement with a 45-acre duck pond on the property, and bird strikes is one of the key missed items within, one of the key things that you do not allow in the ACUs, generates a lot of concern. So if you all would approve this this evening and forward it on to council, by the time it goes to council, if you'd recommend it somehow this evening, either for approval or denial, we'll have an answer for you prior to council meeting and give you some clear legal direction on what we need to do here.
Mr. Greenway, to your point regarding approving it tonight, I would rather table it personally as chairman. I don't know if I have the right to do that, but I would rather table it and bring it back to committee.
I think you have the right to ask for the committee to defer action on this until we can get that legal.
Defer action, not table.
And bring it back to you in November.
Okay.
In these terms.
Okay, so Councilman Dawson, I think there's a lot of questions. I hope you don't, I hope you will agree, I think we should defer this and get it answered at the committee level before we forward it. Do I need your, this is kind of a legal question. If I can do that as chairman, I will. Mr. Greenway?
Madam Chairman, I'll make it easier for you. I withdraw the motion.
Okay, great. That does. And we will wait and defer it until we can get some more legal advice on it. My other question is, have the.
You need the second to.
Yes. Okay, Councilman Glover?
I have no problem. I was supporting Mr. Dawson.
Okay.
But I was also leaning to Paul.
Okay. All right. I have a question regarding, for the legal side of it, those tanks have probably been removed if they were leaking.
I don't think so.
You don't think the tanks have been removed? That's a question I have. The canopy and the pumps may be there, but I don't know if the tanks have been removed or not.
You saying that you think it's removed or it's still there?
I don't know. I'd just like to know.
I think it's still there.
I may need to look into it and get back to you, but in the conversations with the property owner and the applicant, I believe he was working to make sure that they were still in compliance with DEHAC regulations.
Okay, all right. That's another thing we need to find out.
I'll double check.
Okay. Councilman Passment had his hand up? Chairman Passment?
Yes. One of the things that Eric raised is the gas station is in place there. It was a gas station. It was T2 Rural, but this was a non-conforming property, which means that the other two businesses were also non-conforming, but they in fact are now up and running. So one of the things that we're going to need to know is, are we making a decision about the entire property or just part of the property?
Well, you will, if you rezon it, it will be a decision about the entire property and what the additional uses that would be allowed underneath the zoning that is requested. With regards to grandfathering, you're only, we're only going to be dealing with the grandfathering of the gas station portion of the facility. And the reason I want some time to research this, because back during video poker days, I had a similar situation in York County whenever I was zoning administrator there, that person had a convenience store. We said the convenience store was grandfathered, but his video poker machines on the property were not grandfathered, and we lost in court because the judge basically said that once you establish the use, anything that would go along with that as a customary use is also grandfathered. So typical customary uses for a convenience store also provide for the sale of gasoline. So that's what I need to work with our legal department and do some research on and make sure we understand what the limitations are.
Okay, that helps me.
Yes, Alex has his hand up?
There's an individual online.
An individual online, Alex?
Yes, this is actually owner of the gas station. My name is Alex Nomenka. I represent Low Country Legacy, and I have an answer about the storage tanks.
Okay.
We did actually phase two environmental study before the gas station was purchased, and there's currently no leaks.
Okay, thank you.
Also, the DEHAC have, I currently hold a certificate, tightness test was done, and there's tanks are in the proper, tanks and oil pipe in operating condition.
All right, thank you for clarification on that. Okay. Any other, anything else anyone would like to ask questions about? Okay, we're going to defer this to the next meeting. Got it? All right. Going on, thank you, Ms. Smith. Number 11, we have an appointment of Gail Murray to the Planning Commission for a partial first term with an expiration date of 2024. Do I have a motion to move this forward to full council for appointment?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Dawson. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, second by Councilman Glover. Any discussion? All right, without exception, this will move forward to full county council. Number 12 is appointment of Jane Frederick to the zoning board of appeals for a partial first term with expiration date of 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. She's in my district.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Somerville. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilman Glover made a second. All right, without exception, the appointment of Jane Frederick to the zoning board of appeals will move to full council.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is she filling a position as the professional person, or is just a regular?
Ms. Brock or Ms. Vaughn, can you answer that? Because she is an architect.
Right.
I think it's in northern.
Northern Beaufort County?
But I have to look at the backup.
Okay, so is she just a regular position? Got you. Okay.
Okay. And that answers a question Councilman Dawson had before, too. So appointment of William Beddingfield to the Southern Beaufort County Corridor Beautification Committee for a first term with an expiration date of 2024. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Beddingfield?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Glover. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll be happy to do it. I'm just going to let somebody from South of the Broad.
Does someone from South of the Broad like to make that motion?
Happy to do that.
Okay, that was Councilman McAllen. Yes, thank you. All right, without exception, Mr. Beddingfield's nomination will go forward to the full council. Is there any other business in front of the, in front of the Natural Resource Committee? Not we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Chairman?